The hearing on the 990 North Washington property adjacent to the Lowell Scout Park. In previous meetings, I reminded the council of the actions taken by the council in 2007 to preserve the North Washington property by creating a park. I explained why the 990, AKA 848 and 846 North Washington properties were not included in the Scout Park. I understand the city manager recently presented the council with options of that property, as well as the council's desire to properly handle this hot topic by holding public hearings before a decision is made. Thank you for doing your due diligence. By now, you have listened to many of your constituents, as well as others in the Lowell area. I hope you heard what I did. Many individuals from both city and Lowell area, the Scout Park group, North Country Trails, neighbors living near the properties, and more who have all said they would like to preserve the rest of North Washington property by adding it to the Scout Park. What I have not heard is one single person or group say that they would like to see it developed on these properties, or would like to see development on these properties. It seems pretty obvious, no one wants this area developed. Please vote to preserve the rest of North Washington properties by adding 990, AKA 848 and 846 to the Scout Park. Thank you, Sharon Ellison, 407 North Division.
Sorry to interrupt at the same time. Anybody else? Public comment on the 990, or 98, any of the 20 addresses?
I'm here in Need Salt. It's been my pleasure to help protect that property for 42 years I've lived there. I've lost the past, the future, and I've lost my present in the last year. And it's my pleasure to look through people in the eye that seem to have lacked common sense, my friend. And common sense points to last month's presentation by the lady who board the Moose property and gave a good presentation on, oh, are you residents there in the pollution? Or is it non-residential? Are you going to move anything there? And where would you put it if you did move it? I think there's needs to be, before you make any decision, or even if you think the decision might lean towards development, these boards must be taken. They must be taken. I witnessed a 55-gallon barrel of transmission oil, transformer oil, drained the bottom, rusted out, that was the second year I lived there. I've seen old transformers before the cement pads leaking. My neighbor, dear Ken, deceased, witnessed a transformer, maybe two, being buried there in the property. Storage poles were there for, oh, probably since the 40s, stored there. And lord knows what they used to preserve them. And they were just stacked there, broken ones laying around, seeping into the ground. There was a spring that pops out about 30 yards from the road, just this side of Ron Potter's property. It goes around, he deburded around his property, but that's only six feet under the ground. That East Kelly Well, probably started operating in 1921. It took a, and I came here in 78, and I helped start that pump. It's a tube, stage pump. You have to pour a quart of oil to get it going. You have to pour a quart of oil down the case. And I'm just saying, it's a shame, poor planning with a pole barn and cement pads. There was a future to all that. It wasn't planned well. And I did some cursory research, and the Native Americans lived there. They are still there. There are certified bombs, oh, 120 yards from the house there. And it takes, it should take some respect, at least for that. If you're going to move anything there, the boardings are a must. With that, I'm asking for some common sense here. And there's a commonality that you must recommend, must recognize. And I hope you're able to make that step and leave it alone. By leaving it alone, you saved, I've worked at Ware Road, I saw it on the Cedar Program in 1980. Worked there, worked at the old DPW place that had a floor drain. They were cleaning recent parts, carbon, perchloride, directly in the river. Carelessness, well, now we know better. And I hope that you can make the decision to do the right thing here and just leave it alone. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric.
Robin Gatz, 1480 David Drive in Lowell Town. Bruce Matthews did a great job of giving a presentation last month, and I appreciate it, so I won't repeat a lot of what he said, but I wanted to bring up one other idea about this property. I'm a person who has immune problems, pretty serious ones at times. I'm doing great most days, other days I have a hard time. I love hiking. Some days I can do those hills back behind Scout Cabin, other days I can't. So for that one little strip of North Country Trail that's right there by the house, it's a lifesaver for me. It's level, it's not too difficult. It gives, all the scientific evidence shows that walking in nature is great for your physical and your mental well-being, and that one's been the one that I can do over and over again regardless. I've done the 100 Mile Challenge for six years in a row now, and for me, it is a challenge. And I just would hate to see, I know you could move that trail down closer to Scout Cabin so it wouldn't impact if you want to do something with that property, but that's going to take away all that pine smell and all that wonderful feeling of being able to walk on that trail for people like me who have to see those. Thank you.
It is a challenge, too. I don't even like doing 100 miles. Jake?
Jake, Davenport, 527 Lafayette Street. I just want to express my support for turning the 990 property into parkland after the removal of the house and all the other development on the property. And I also have the suggestion of, instead of the park being named Scout Park, naming it after Bill Nowak, if the Blows decide they do not want their name on it. Bill Nowak, slow background, is the, was the first Scout troop at 202. He was the one who helped with the construction of the Boy Scout Cabin way back in 1943. So there's quite a bit of history with Bill Nowak on that property. So if the name of the park is changed, I would highly suggest naming it Bill Nowak Park, or some sort of nod to Bill Nowak in still making or still recognizing the importance of the Boy Scouts on the property. So thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I guess this is as good a time as any. I would like to see the name changed down there, and I've been working with Susan, I believe you've helped out, too. And we do have the Blows' blessings now to change the, if we decided to call it Ivan and Jane Blow Park, whatever, the Scout Cabin Park. I think you told me, Jake, it's such a small little footprint, right?
Yeah.
Where the cabin itself sits. Maybe we need to, at this point, look at calling that the Scout Park area, but expanding that area back where the old gun range is and all of that. And then making, taking the property, the 990 property, and working with the Trails, North Country Trail, us as the city, and Bruce and his group, and the Boy Scouts, and your group. And I propose we look at taking that property and we put a parking lot on it. We can use several different means. We don't have to asphalt it, we don't have to concrete it, it just has to be a hard surface material. We already have city water down there. If we're going to leave it as a park, and we're going to do all these changes, and we're going to make it better for everybody in the community, then a restroom needs to be put in down there. A uni, you know, a restroom for a single unisex restroom. I believe a water, drinking fountain should be there. We already have city water, we have drinking fountains in all of our parks. So I believe that's kind of a no-brainer. Security, well, we already, unfortunately, we have to have security cameras at all of our restrooms because of vandals and whatever, and that should be no different. When I said something to Jake about this, Jake actually said something, and it kind of made me giggle. And I says, you know, I says, then, everybody has a place to park. And Jake says, well, that's a long walk for Scouts. And I thought, geez, aren't they supposed to go on walks? So, I know Jake didn't mean it, but it just, it made me smile. But Susan helped me. We did reach out to the Blows. We have a couple, I think, really fantastic things. Ivan was just as much a part of that Scout Cabin, and I miss him dearly. I miss him coming down the hill on his tractor to go down there and mow, because at that time, you guys weren't there. But if he didn't mow it, it didn't get mowed. And he was unbelievable. And I did get to speak to him the last day he down there mowing. So I think it's important that we honor that family for all they've done. Ivan's done more in the modern era than a lot of other people around. He built the showboat. He didn't want any fame or fortune of it, but yet, he did, and he took care of it for all those years. So that's, I like your idea, Jake, but I just think if, 990, if we can do that with that property, and we can work with our partners, and we can do all these things, I don't want it to be a long, drug-out thing either. I'd like it to be a two- or three-year where it has to be, right? So we'll start the process, we'll start the conversations, and if it can be done and get it done in three years, then I think we've got a wonderful asset to our park system. It's a good way, in my opinion, everybody wins. We don't have any losers anymore. I notice when you guys, when the Scouts are down there, one of the biggest things I noticed and what drove me to the parking lot, when you guys are down there with the trailers and the trucks and the cars, and it's snowy, I noticed our fire trucks, my big one-ton four-door, it's tight to get that around. We would never be able to get a fire truck down there, you know, to make a turn to come back to help to do the fires. So the parking, I think it'd be kind of a neat thing. Low-density lighting, now it's safe, it's lit, and it gives us everything we have at some of our other parks. But how we fund it, I think we work with everybody involved. I don't think it'd be too hard to come up with it, but that's my idea.
Also, let me say, because Marty and I have been talking about this for months now, and Marty and Jim and I went trying to get the new showboat named after Ivan Blow, and the family respectfully told us to get lost, but it's not, I don't want it to be viewed as a slight to the Boy Scouts. Or like, we don't value having you back there, or the work you do, or what you do for the community, because that is absolutely not the case. I just wonder what section of people see Scout Park, and they think, oh, that's a Boy Scout event property, or I can't go back there, or whatever. And if you think there's a more deserving person to have a beautiful piece of this community named after them, and the Blows, I would really like to meet them. So I don't want the Scouts to take it as a sign of disrespect from us to you.
No.
Because it's absolutely not how we intend it.
My recommendation is, the gentleman you mentioned.
Don't know where.
Yeah, and boy, his name actually on the building.
On the pad, yeah.
Now, the building could be named.
Right.
After, there's a lot of other buildings that could be named after other citizens or more.
Yeah, his name is already on the building.
Yeah, is it? Maybe a nice plaque or something.
We could get a nice little plaque right for that turnaround island if we're taking the Scout Park stuff down, right? You know, Scout Cabin and grounds in memory of whatever. But I don't want, I just think Scout Park is, there may be people who just think they can't go back there. You know what I mean? It's no different than gun club property or state land. You see that sign, and you're like, oh, you know, maybe I can't go back there.
I think people look at Scout Park as, like the parking lot by King Milling. Oh, that's King Milling's personal parking. It's called Scout Park. Oh, it's only for Scouts. We can't go there, right? They can't go up and enjoy the sled hill, and they can't go enjoy the beautiful river footage, frontage that's down through there. And that was, you know, part of it, too. But I think, I think I'd really like to see this idea go forward and move. I think Bruce and his group are, would be a great asset. I know the Scouts have put a lot of input in. We'd have to reach out, like I said, to the North Country Trail. They have a division, that's all they do. They do parking lots and this stuff. And I think it's just going to come down to figuring out how to fund it.
There's a long track record in this community of getting stuff done that we want to get done. Like, to look at Pink Arrow, and you look at, you know, the cancer benefits that we do, and the fundraisers that we do, and the showboat events and all that stuff. And people come out because they genuinely do care. I mean, I think that would be the case here as well, especially because you'll have so many passionate hands in the pot. So, Peggy?
Oh, can I have just one more second? So, there you are, Gary. So, I had DPW.
Be careful, please.
Yes?
I'm awfully angry.
I had the DPW take down the wind chime that you had created. And I want to have that also put back up on that park property, and have a plaque with your name on it, because you were the man that built it.
Oh, that's nice.
I've worked with the DPW guys. We've got some big poles that are going to be coming down this year for the river crossing. They have to replace the big poles for Crosses One Road there. Charlie and his group are going to put the poles off to the side so we can put it back up. And I think it's important, because you were there, you built it, and...
I'd considered leaving it, so, I appreciate that. The plaque's not necessary, it was built for everyone.
Yep. But everybody up there misses it when it's in the trees, when it makes the noise.
Thank you.
So, I think it needs to go back there.
Thank you.
Now, thanks.
Thank you, 982 North Washington. I really appreciate what I'm hearing here tonight. I think you've really been listening to the public, to everyone that really appreciates so much that whole area out there. And I really appreciate what I'm hearing. I just, I, one other thing that I would like to add, and I think I talked to you, Marty, about the idea, with the different things that you're looking at maybe doing up there. I don't, I don't know the young boy, but I know that in our school system somewhere we have a young boy, I call him Butterfly Boy. But that he gets, he puts out seeds for the monarch butterflies, for the...
Liam and Wagner Kellogg.
Yeah. I think it'd be great if we could get him involved and do some kind of butterfly, you know, kind of native plants. I think there's been some talk of that kind of thing, to get, to do some of that. And the Boy Scouts, I'm sure, would be a great asset to, for all of them to work together on just something like that, to make it a, we've got the pines there, there are a lot of trees there, a lot of woods, but there's a lot of pretty much open space there as well. And I, so, I'm just throwing that out there.
No, it's a good idea. And that's why I said, this is an idea. Now, we take the idea and we make it a reality, right? So there'll be, as everybody knows, we do a call for the council the first Saturday of the month. I'd like everybody to attend, we'll try to put this whole room in there, and start the discussions of different, different ideas, different avenues.
That's great.
But...
And then if I may say, too, Ivan Blow, he literally gave his life for that. I was up there when he died. And so I think, as much as I appreciate, I know you don't know that, was very involved, there were others that were very involved, and I appreciate the idea there. But yeah, I don't, if there's someplace for Ivan's memorial kind of thing to be, I really think that's a place for it to be.
I agree.
So I do appreciate that. Just one other thing, just a little bit of a concern, and I think it's just, I don't know if oversight or whatever, but we're talking, I don't know if you have an app anymore, but...
Can you pull up a little?
Yeah. We're talking in the orange, that's 990 area. But then across the street, what's in blue or purple or whatever, that is also, from what I understand, that's actually still zoned as residential.
Yes.
And so when we talk 990, we, I assume we're also talking that whole area on both sides of North Washington. Is that right?
That would be my recommendation. Whatever you do for 990, you need to do for property for us.
So that would be the whole thing. So when we're talking 990, we're not talking just the orange.
There's three addresses.
Yeah.
There are, aren't there? Yeah, yeah, 990, I don't know, because mine's 982, but yeah, the addresses are really...
990 technically for Regis is 848.
Yeah.
Blue is 846, and there's a couple of them for Scout Park.
Okay, yeah. So we are talking.
We're talking about all these.
The entire area.
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you all so much. Thank you.
Want to add something?
Perry Beecham, talking about renaming, I think it's a great idea. I sat on the parks for close to 30 years and was involved changing it to Scout Park, because it was called, we got this, in our minutes, was North Washington Property, and it was always just called North Washington Property, and everybody said, you know, that's where the Scout Cabin is. And I agree with you, it's, I would look at, you know, Ivan Blow, Ivan and Jane Park, whatever, and you can have, you know, the Nowak Rivette, I believe Julie Rivette was involved in building that, the cabin. I mean, when we, we just thought at the time that everybody calls it the Scout Cabin, so, okay, let's just name, give it that name. The intention was not to be exclusive only to the Boy Scouts, because again, as I grew up, YMCA, we used the Scout Cabin, I believe the Scouts let the Y. We had day camp up there, and I can remember as a little kid going up there, doing day camp, and shooting bow and arrows, and all sorts of different things. Oh, good. I thought I had turned it off, but...
You might have answered it.
So, anyway, I think it's a great idea to change it. I mean, other parks we have in the community, for instance, like the Dog Park, we call it the Dog Park, but it's the Dog Park located at Stony Lake.
Yes.
And you can, you know, and if you look at, like, in the community, you look at the football field, it's Bob Perry Field located at Memorial Stadium, you know? So I think you could, the Scouts can incorporate along with the other, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. I know you've been nice to us two meetings in a row.
Yeah.
It's because of voices.
New way of life.
Three minutes of data.
Embrace change.
I love it. I'm embracing this.
Yeah, it will lead to ten riverside. I'm thrilled with hearing this as well. I know, I was involved with the Scouts as well. My son heard this Eagle there. Jake was in the troop when I was involved as well. The Scouts truly loved Ivan Blow. Ivan Blow, I know you love the Scouts. The biggest plaque probably at the Scout Cabin is right there by the flagpole, and it's a memorial for Ivan. So, you know, I can't speak for the Scouts, but that certainly seems like a great thing. And I just love the harvest going into there. And my other comment is, I think if the whole committee is allowed to truly realize that it's all of theirs, then that really helps the Scouts live on in perpetuity there. I think the only thing that may need to be considered, and I think that's pretty typical for parks anyway, is just for some permitting. You know, the troop does have, I was the outdoor chair, so I got to plan all the camps, except for Scout Camp. So I know that, you know, there are going to be weekends when they either have another troop, or troop one or two stays there. And it would be nice to at least have the two areas where they typically, you know, put up tents and had their fires and all that, to at least be permitted for that period of time, but then the rest of it opened to the public.
It's a good idea.
See, and that's all the things when we start the discussion, right? We can bring that in, just like the wildflowers for the butterflies, and, you know, things like that.
And actually, another word, you know, my son is not deceased, but his Eagle project was across the street from where, where the other bridge goes over the river, and he's got a bridge over a reading on the North Country Trail, so that's just, just allows us. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before we, yeah? No? No?
Teresa called because she couldn't believe you got up three times. Because she just called me.
She needs to come over here.
You know the voice is on.
As long as he doesn't call 911 this week, I think.
Just, and I'm sorry, I probably should just wait until you're really discussing what to do up there, but I've been thinking, too, with all the historic signs that we have around Main Street and whatnot, someone had mentioned the Indian burial mounds, and my brother remembers kind of where they were. And there is a lot of history up there. I know Gary knows a lot of the history of the area. And so I wondered, too, if it wouldn't be really neat just to have, maybe not the big signs, but just some nice signs that kind of tell, this is where the Gris Mill was, this is where the Indian burial mound, you know, those kinds of things. So just a sign.
Yeah, and that's where...
But I'll bring those, too.
Yeah, and that's working with Lisa at the museum, right?
Okay.
Because Lisa, that whole group is the ones that went and wars up and down Main Street, so...
Okay, okay. And that just might be something for the Boy Scouts, too, because I know that you've done a lot of the history, I think, some of the troops have and whatnot, so, yeah, like you said, a good collaboration, so, yes.
Anybody else?
Just kidding, you made me sing the last time I said it. You know what I asked?
It was really helping me get a Bruce song out of this. All right, we'll close the public hearing then, and then we'll go to council comments on 990. Yep?
I'm full of the idea of community collaboration, whether it's honoring those before us, butterflies, parking lots for future visitors, permits, so the signs are protected during those times. That's all, I'm hearing all the things.
And you guys know when you're bringing another troop in, right? Where every year you could say, we need this much space this weekend, this weekend, right?
So, let me get this straight. Do you want us a viable permit anytime that we want to use the grounds?
No, no. It's just so we know, so if somebody else comes in and says, hey, I want to go up there, and I got a large group coming in, we want to be able to, as a city, say, well, the Scouts have that.
At this point, I think that's come through the Scouts to this point.
Okay.
Yeah, so anytime another organization, we only let other troops or packs within BSA use the property as it is right now. So whenever they want to use the cabin or the grounds, they reach out to us directly. We have an internal calendar that we use to distribute, you know, who gets to use it when. That's never gone through the city. We've never contacted the city for prior approval or...
Nor do I want it to go through the city.
Right. So, that's kind of how it's been, you know, with my tenure to this point, and with the previous administrations as well, so...
Jim?
I've heard a lot of it since I moved to Calhoun, the potential Indian burial out there. I'd definitely like to make sure that we can throw in that. I don't think there's any, I'm not aware of anybody knowing anything positively, 100% that it has ever been stated, these are real, but if it is, I'd definitely like to make sure we cover that. Certain things you cannot do on those grounds, so make sure we do it right.
I like the idea, I like the idea of having more discussions and tweaking it as we roll along. Glad to see that you mentioned the roundabout there at the end.
I did not use that word. I would never use that word. I did. I don't appreciate, I instigated it openly.
A round? You have to get a round?
It's called a circle drive.
Okay.
Sometimes, I agree that there's a lot of work to do going forward. Sometimes, I agree that there's a lot of work to do going forward, I mean, we haven't even taken the original steps, you know, to mitigate.
Testing the soil was part of the plan anyway, right?
We're gonna have to address it, yes. It has to be addressed.
For whoever brought that up, it's in the works.
In the works. The thing, I feel like I've, the overwhelming comment that we've got from these public hearings and from emails and being on the street and everything is, don't develop it. So I think all the other stuff, we have years to work out, right? But I think a good step, at least right now, would be to at least declare what our intentions are gonna be going forward. And I've heard enough public input that I feel comfortable making a motion that we dedicate nine ninety and the surrounding parcels to be included in the park system. I would also add upon annexation. Upon nine ninety's annexation.
Yeah. So when we annex, we're doing the blue property, too.
We already.
The property is already.
That's already.
The only property that has to be utilarily annexed would be the red property.
Are you making that motion?
I'll amend the motion to include nine ninety, North Washington, and all the surrounding undesigned parcels into the park system upon the annexation from Virginia's township. That's my motion.
And I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salswio.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankbit.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeWorm.
Yes.
Have we ever gotten applause?
Only when you were here that night.
Yes, we did get an applause when we closed down the biodigester.
I forgot about that, we did.
Biodigester by the bathroom?
You guys want to take back your applause? I appreciate everybody coming to all the public hearings, I appreciate all the feedback, not just on this, on parking, on biodigester, on marijuana, on everything we've done. I appreciate that you recognize we want you here, and we want to hear what you have to say, and I appreciate you coming. But with both those old businesses, items, old business items, is what I think drew most of you here, so we'll take five minutes, if you guys want to go, and you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, even though they're infinitely exciting, so we'll, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene for the rest of the meeting. That way, if people want to go home and watch The Voice, they can.